City Clerk, are we ready to go?
I do not see city staff yet in city hall. The rest of us are ready. Mayor, if you can give me one moment, I am trying to find out.
Absolutely. We're just waiting for everybody to be online and we will begin the meeting momentarily. I see city hall coming online. City team at city hall, are you ready?
Yes, we are ready.
Okay. So this is, I'd like to please call the regular San Bruno City Council meeting of November the ninth to order, and I would ask if our city clerk would please take role.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Here.
Councilmember Mason?
Here.
Councilmember Salazar?
Here.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Here.
And I want to thank councilmember Hamilton for offering and leading us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. Thank you very much for doing that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, councilmember Hamilton, I appreciate it. Let's move on to item number four, public comments for item not on the agenda. Individuals be allowed up to three minutes. It is council policy to refer matters raised in this forum to staff for investigation and/or action where appropriate. The Brown Act prohibits the council from discussing or acting upon any matter not agendaized pursuant to state law. Any folks of the audience, if you could please raise your hand and we will start to have the city clerk bring you in. And again, this is for items not on tonight's agenda.
First, we'll start with Paul Wapensky.
Good evening, hear me?
Yes, whenever you're ready, Paul.
Thanks. Veterans Day is on Thursday, and I'd like to acknowledge all the veterans who have served the United States in peace and at war. And tomorrow is a very special day for some of us, and it's the 246th birthday of the United States Marine Corps. And to all the Marines who live in San Bruno, who have served their four years and moved on or retired after 30 years as I did, I'd like to wish you all a happy birthday and remember those who served with Semper Fi.
And sir, to you, on behalf of all of us, thank you for your service. And an early happy Veterans Day to you. Next, please.
Next is Robert Whitehair.
Mr. Mayor, city council staff, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight before the council. My name is Robert Whitehair, a resident of San Mateo, a former city of San Bruno employee, and I might add a former Marine myself. As an active volunteer with the Fossil Free Buildings Silicon Valley Campaign at San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties, I'm here tonight with an opportunity for those San Bruno residents and business owners thinking about more electrification. There are four areas where all of us can take personal actions to reduce the greenhouse gas emissions that are causing earth to heat up. These are the electricity supply, transportation, buildings, and industrial emissions. By being part of Peninsula Clean Energy, Silicon Valley Clean Energy, and some other parts of the world, the city of San Bruno, its residents and businesses can already check off as done the elimination of greenhouse gases from the electricity supply. As a member of the Fossil Free Buildings Campaign, I'm here to update you on our work and introduce a program that you and your city residents may want to use. To assist residents in switching their homes to electric or as much electric as possible, we have started a volunteer ambassador program of which I am one. Individuals such as me, who have switched one or more of their home heating, water heating, cooking, or other appliances, are available to answer questions from others who want to make the switch or who are thinking about it. This free service will provide information on rebates, suggestions about how to get started, informal referrals to electric contractors, by the way, we don't represent any one contractor, we can give you a list, and recommendations on equipment. To get in touch with a home electrification ambassador, simply go to the website of fossilfreebuildings.org, scroll down to the button for the Electric Home Ambassador Program, fill in the form with your contact information, and answer a few questions so we can help you. An ambassador will get in touch with suggestions and information. Again, the website is fossilfreebuildings.org. We look forward to hearing from any resident or business owner who has questions about how to switch to electric. Thank you for your time tonight.
And thank you to you as well for that, and I thought the name did look familiar. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Al Kamoli.
Good evening. My name is Al Kamoli, and I'm with the Citizens for a San Mateo County Gun Buyback. Over the past few years, our organization has raised funds to distribute during buyback events. Our group is assisted by the San Mateo County Sheriff's Office, who actually managed the event, along with assistance from the Belmont and Redwood City Departments. I wanted to take this opportunity tonight to speak with you about an upcoming buyback event that'll take place on Saturday, December 11th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in San Carlos at 1,000 Skyway Road, right off 101. Firearms should be transported unloaded and in the trunk of vehicles. $100 will be given out for handguns, shotguns, and rifles, and $200 for assault weapons. We encourage all communities to help spread the word to residents. We have sent a copy of a postcard and flyer to city administrative officers with the hope that you'll partner with us in promoting this important event. We hope to see you there, and thank you very much for allowing me to address you this evening.
Thank you for being here and thank you for your comments. Are there any other speakers, city clerk?
There are no other speakers, Mayor Medina.
Thank you very much. With that, we will move on to announcements and presentations. Item A, receive update from Recology San Bruno regarding the fall cleanup event that was held on October 23rd last month. I can see the general manager from Recology is being brought in, and I believe we will be turning the meeting or presentation and some information.
Yes, does the city have the presentation share on the screen at all? No? The slide deck? Nope, okay, well, I will go without the slide deck and I'll just give you the presentation itself then. Mayor, council, city staff, and public, thank you for allowing me to join you tonight and provide you an update on our community cleanup event that happened on October 23rd. What I kind of wanted to do was kind of give you a history of where this all began. Oh, great, thank you. That's fantastic. So we'll get to the history slide and we're good to go. Okay, there you go. Recology's always partnered with the city for the last several years on the abandoned waste program and illegal dumping, and we've been always trying to work together to figure out how to best accomplish, you know, and remedy that abandoned waste program. So in 2020, during the pandemic, kind of, we decided what a great way would be to do a fall community cleanup. So we approached the city of San Bruno and asked if they would be okay with this and if they would partner with us, and they hands down said absolutely, let's do it, and let's host it in the city hall parking lot. It was a tremendous success, over 100 cars, and we quickly realized at the end of that event that we had already outgrown that space. So fast forward to then spring, when we realized that Operation Clean Suite was probably not going to happen, we said, well, the last event was so successful, let's put together another community cleanup. We reached out to the Church of Latter-day Saints and asked if we can use their parking lot, which is very large, and they were absolutely supportive to help our community, so we hosted our second one in the spring of 2021, and we had about 260 cars. So we saw that there was a very big demand and a need for these community cleanups, so we decided to have the third one this past October 23rd. The church was more than happy to let us use their parking lot again, and so we hosted our very, our third fall community cleanup on Saturday, October 23rd. Next slide. We held this event from 8:00 a.m. till 11:00 a.m. We had 18 volunteers, which was tremendous, and it included city staff, council, recology, and actually missionaries from the, from church actually helped us out. We served 439 cars that day. We went through 11, we filled 11 30-yard debris boxes, and we collected 64,000 pounds of garbage. So you can see by the pictures, we had quite a line that went up Sneed and all the way down to maybe the Google Building and Carl's Jr. at times. So customers were very patient, they were, they were happy when they got through, nobody was angry having to wait. They were just very appreciative of having the event, so they were, it was worth the wait. Next slide. We also collected and took out of people's homes 8,200 pounds of latex ink. We also had a lot of e-waste, 1,634 pounds of e-waste that was collected. Some of these things are the hardest things people have to get rid of, and you don't know how to get rid of something, you possibly just leave it on the street, and then it becomes abandoned waste and makes our city look terrible. Along with those hard to find or hard to recycle items, we collected refrigerators, refrigerators, couple of ovens, nine dishwashers, and 23 mattresses. So it was quite the success. Some improvements that we made on this one, as you learn time after time, you make improvements. We put out some A-frames, I think this was a great improvement. We rotated, we had two of these A-frames that described the event and when it was and where it was, and it had a QR code that somebody could scan with their phone. We rotated those two A-frames about every two days for the three weeks leading up to the event. We also had companies, e-recycling and Clean Harbors. We had those companies actually be onsite to handle all the paint and all the electronics. That allowed all the rest of our volunteers to help our residents get the stuff out of their cars and into the debris boxes quickly. And it also took out that element of us having to say, I'm sorry, that particular item isn't in the paint program. We, Clean Harbors took care of all of that for us. The biggest addition this year was that we invested and put a insert into the utility bill. And we think this was the huge peak in the amount of participants. We now know where we can reach the residents best in San Bruno, because most of the customers who drove up had the insert in the car, kind of as their voucher to get in. So we really found that that is now a great way to communicate with our residents. Next slide. So I just, in summary, I just want to thank the city of San Bruno for your partnership on this program and how it's, the partnership together and the volunteer from your city staff and from the council has really made this the event what it is. And a huge thank you again to the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints for their gracious donation of their parking lot, they're wonderful to work with, and we look forward to the next one. So thanks for your time.
Thank you very much for your presentation and the information and the results of that Saturday. We'll go to colleagues for questions. Vice Mayor Medina?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the report. It was a tremendous success. I wanted to also thank the community for coming out and for those that were patient, because the lines were long and it took a lot of time to get everybody processed. So thank, thank you, Kirsten, and to everyone involved. It was, it was a good workout that day, and figuring out how we're going to do the next one, it will take some more effort. So, thank you.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, I just wanted to also thank you, I know that this is a community hit, so it's great to see these events that are not just bringing the community together, but that are efficient. And I also wanted to thank Kirsten and Recology, because we haven't seen you since the last one, and we do know that there was a significant amount of help from Recology for the six community cleanup events that were sponsored by the San Bruno Now and the Cleaning and Greening San Bruno Group, and that brought out over 300 residents at such a time when people were stuck at home. And I know Recology came out and picked up loads and loads of garbage throughout those six events. So thank you for this last event, and thank you for those six events before then, just because we hadn't seen you since. So thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Just very quickly, want to echo the comments and the thanks, it was a wonderful event. Extremely popular, I think they're just going to get more and more popular as we move forward, so we'll need to plan for continued growth there, I think. And, and as Councilmember Mason said, I appreciate the partnership between, between Recology and our city and all areas. Thank you.
Yes, and again, thank you, another success I know was embarked upon, as you indicated, that another point was to, in lieu of Operation Clean Suite because of COVID, and then you've done a separate one, so one in addition. So we appreciate, again, I know that wasn't, in May, probably wasn't, weren't thinking about two, but we appreciate your willing, because I know it's a lot of work and effort for the staff. As we depart, you folks are still working into the afternoon, so want to thank you as well. And enjoy the rest of your evening. You know, I just switched over my email, and so I'm going to ask city hall if they could read the next announcement.
I can read it. Mayor, I have it up, I can read it.
Thank you.
The next announcement is San Mateo County continues to offer COVID-19 vaccines and boosters for eligible individuals. Appointments are preferred and can be made by visiting myturn.ca.gov or by calling 1-833-422-4255. COVID-19 vaccines for kids aged 5 to 11 are now also available. In San Mateo County Health, we'll offer clinics on their county site, as well as additional clinics available on myturn, myturn.ca.gov. It is recommended that parents contact their child's primary care physician to learn more or if they have any questions about the pediatric vaccination or eligibility status. And those links that I mentioned can be found on tonight's agenda, if you would like to visit them for more information.
Thank you very much for your assistance, city clerk. And we're going to move on to item C, receive presentation and annual report from the Parks and Recreation Commission. And we're bringing in, obviously, I see Danielle Brewer from our Parks and Recreation Department, Community Services, excuse me, going back in time. And do we have the chair, or who's, or is this Brewer making? Ah, the presenter is listed as our chair, Mike Palmer.
Wait, sorry. It's not letting me turn on the camera. There we go, there we go.
Hold on, folks. Sorry, there you are, making a grand entrance. There we go, look at that. Yes, technology, Mr. Chair. The, we'll turn it over to you, sir, for the annual report.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor Medina and members of the city council. My name is Mike Palmer, and I currently serve as the chairperson for the Parks and Recreation Commission. I'm here tonight to present the commission's annual report for 2020, 2021, and to outline the work plan for 2021, 2022.
Takes a second.
Hold on, technical difficulty. This slide shows the brief agenda for topics that I will be presenting tonight. Slide number three, this slide lists the current commission members. With the council's permission, I would like to introduce the commission's two newest members, Commissioner Thomas Kuhn and Student Representative Adams Abriger. Mr. Kuhn resides in San Bruno with his wife and two sons, and currently works in commercial and multifamily real estate development. Student Representative Abriger is currently a senior at Cappuccino and, upon graduation, hopes to study physics at MIT. Welcome to both of them. This slide shows the commission's accomplishments for 2021, 2020, 2021. That won't be the last time I mess that up, by the way, folks. These will be shown and discussed in a little more detail as we scroll through the annual report. The Parks and Recreation Commission continues to provide input for the new Recreation and Aquatic Center in a variety of ways. Commissioners Chris Gonzalez and Mike Palmer continue to serve on the city's advisory committee as representatives of the Parks and Recreation Commission. The pictures that you see on this slide are from a display that was placed in the Rec Center during September of 2020. This, this display showed samples of different types of interior surface finishes, as well as different recommendations for interior signage. Members of the advisory committee were asked to come by and provide their input on both of these topics. In addition to the advisory committee, Commissioners Jessica Martinucci and Lucy Zamatea continue to serve on a subcommittee in conjunction with the city's Culture and Arts Commission to explore ideas for creating options for art to be located in and around the new Recreation and Aquatic Center. At its June 16th meeting, the commission received a presentation from city manager Grogan and Don Murcus from Group Four Architects. This is an update on the project, as well as an explanation of the process for awarding the construction bid. This next slide shows a couple of pictures taken at the Tom Lehrer Field Grandstand and Concession Stand rededication. This event included members of the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors, the San Bruno City Council, several members of the Parks and Recreation Commission, sea staff, several members of the Lehrer family, and the general public. This project included replacement of all of the existing seating, sealing the concrete areas to prevent water intrusion, painting the entire facility, replacing old doors and windows to the rooms located under the bleachers, and updating the concession stand. Part of the funding for this project came from a partnership with the San Bruno Lions Club, which had received a grant from the San Bruno Community Foundation. This slide shows the new location of the Unity Sculpture and the Reflections Seating Area. The sculpture had to be relocated because the previous location was in the footprint of the new Recreation and Aquatics Center building. Funding for this project came from the Culture and the Arts Commission. The city continues to benefit from adopt-to-park relationships with several groups. The two pictures on this slide depict some of the work that was done by the Seagulls Baseball Academy through its adopt-to-park partnership with the city at Tom Lehrer Field. Picture on the left shows work being performed in one of the bullpens to replace the two pitchers' mounds. The photo on the right shows the newly rebuilt pitcher's mound on the field and new sod that was installed between the mound and the home plate area. Members of the Park and Recreation Commission continued to visit all of the city's parks during 2020, 2021. At the completion of each visit, commissioners complete a park visit form, which reflects each commissioner's observations of the park being visited. Once completed, the forms are submitted to the Parks and Recreation Commission chairperson for review. The chairperson then submits each form to the parks manager for review and possible action. This slide shows a wooden railing being replaced at Seventh Avenue and Walnut Park. This wooden railing had been noted on several park visit forms. Monthly Zoom meetings. I am sure that most of us would agree that getting used to conducting meetings via Zoom has been an accomplishment. The Parks and Recreation Commission is no exception. This is a screenshot of the commission's May meeting. The commission's meetings have been conducted via Zoom since May of 2020, and I want to thank all the past and present commissioners for their flexibility in being able to adapt the new meeting structure. The new technology was challenging at times, but now that the commission is more comfortable with it, the meetings have been both productive and informative. The city recently installed a new stone memorial at Earl Glenview Park. It was installed on Friday, September 3rd, and the ceremony honoring this new installation took place on Monday, September 13th. The memorial is installed so that it can be viewed while sitting on the stone bench. It was constructed as part of the original design of the park and faces towards the Crestmore Canyon area. Thanks to Commissioner Mike Zastro for the pictures and who was present for both the installation and the dedication of the new monument. Excuse me. On November 18th, 2020, the Parks and Recreation Commission awarded its 2020 Community Recognition Award to Greg Pierce. Greg is well-known to many people in San Bruno for his constant presence and community involvement. This page shows a couple of pictures of Mr. Pierce. Greg's accomplishments include serving San Bruno ASO and Lowen Soccer Programs in several different capacities, including board member and coach, current and or past president for both the Rotary and San Bruno Lions Clubs, serving on the Parks and Recreation Commission from 2006 to 2015, and coaching badminton and soccer at both Parkside and Cappuccino. On May 19th, 2021, the Parks and Recreation Commission awarded its 2021 Community Recognition Award to Brian Hafter. Brian is well-known to many folks in San Bruno and even some neighboring cities because of his involvement in the youth soccer programs in our area. This page shows two photos of Mr. Hafter. Brian's accomplishments include coaching many soccer teams for both the Lowen and ASO Soccer Programs in San Bruno, coaching girls' soccer teams at Cappuccino High School, and being a volunteer college admissions counselor. Both of the Community Recognition Awards were submitted to the commission by a subcommittee that was formed. Both of the Community Recognition Awards were submitted to the Commission by a subcommittee that was formed to review the applications and recommend a recipient. This time, I want to thank the subcommittee comprised of Commissioners Lucy Zamatea, Lori Greenberg, and Dave Nigel for their excellent recommendations. This slide details the Parks and Recreation Commission goals for 2021-2022. In addition to the park visits and the ongoing work on the new Recreation and Aquatic Center, the Commission has identified the following: To assist with recording and the inventory of all park amenities, continue to assist the city with its year-three projects for the ADA Transition Plan, the completion of the Lehrer Field Parking Lot Project, the launch of the Friends of Crestmore Canyon Group to help facilitate walking trails in the Crestmore Canyon, and to continue to serve as liaisons to the Recreation and Aquatic Center Advisory Board. Last year during this time, the Council allowed me to make an additional comment on an item that was not included in the annual report. I am asking to be able to do that again. This was regarding Commissioner David Nigel, and was in honor of his 50th year as a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for the City of San Bruno. This year is my honor to inform the City Council and the City of San Bruno that Commissioner Nigel has recently received an additional honor from the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members. Dave has been a member of that organization since 1970. In 2005, Dave was the initial recipient and is currently the only recipient of the CAPR-CBM Hall of Fame Award for Distinguished Service. Since 1979, Commissioner Nigel has been the State Chair of the CAPR-CBM Scholarship Committee. During his tenure, he has not only personally contributed thousands of dollars, but has been a tireless fundraiser and generated more than $45,000 for this scholarship. On October 23rd, 2021, in honor of Commissioner Nigel's important contributions, this organization's annual scholarship, the California Association of Park and Recreation Commissioners and Board Members renamed this scholarship the David Nigel/CAPR-CBM Scholarship Award. This is truly a special honor and very well-deserved. This will conclude the annual report to City Council from the Parks and Recreation Commission for 2020-2021. Thank you for your time. I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council may have for me this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to Ms. Brewer. Questions or comments from my colleagues? Councilmember Salazar.
I just wanted to thank Mike for his years of leadership on the Commission, and just pass along my thanks to the entire Commission, and I miss being part of that group. It was a great, great bunch of people, and great work continues. So, thanks, Mike.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no other hands. Mike, once again, if you please go back and thank the Commission for their work, their effort on behalf of myself, and as a former Commissioner as well, and they were enjoyable. And just for all the work and the effort that's being done from staff, as well as from the Commission even during these COVID times. So, always a pleasure to see you, and thank you for your time, and enjoy the rest of the evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Councilmembers. Have a great evening.
And, thank you. And then, City Clerk, if you would be as kind to continue the announcements.
Yes. The next announcement is, learn about San Bruno's districting process. Past meetings and workshop recordings and materials are posted to districtingsanbruno.org/schedule. The next community workshop is scheduled for Saturday, November 13th, 2021, at 2:00 p.m., and will be held in person at City Hall. Masks are required. For full detail, visit districtingsanbruno.org/schedule, and those links are listed on the agenda.
Thank you. Next item.
Sorry. The next item is declare November 14th through 20th, 2021, as United Against Hate Week in San Bruno.
Thank you. We do have a proclamation this evening. As you know, this is a, this is something that is broad-based through the country. However, also for San Mateo County, it is with thanks to the City Manager for the North Mayors and Managers brought this forward, and it was spearheaded and adopted by those in the county, and was done at the Board of Supervisors, and so we are continuing that tradition. I'll just read a couple of the whereases. Whereas the number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically over the past couple of years, and whereas the City of San Bruno City Council stands strongly in support of our diverse community, honoring and protecting every individual regardless of race, creed, color, gender, religion, ethnic, national orientation, or identity, and whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are the key to unlocking, understanding, and embracing differences between people. And now, therefore, I, Rico Medina, Mayor of the City of San Bruno, hereby proclaim the week of November the 14th through the 20th, 2021, as United Against Hate Week. So, again, and I want to thank the Heart Committee also, and our Councilmembers Salazar and Mason, along with the others that have been on it, who have been promoting, as well as announcing upcoming things that are on the websites, and I appreciate. Councilor Mason.
Yeah, I was just going to encourage our Council to share with their friends and on their social media sites the events that are coming up, because the Heart Committee with Councilmember Salazar and a number of other community members have planned different things. But one of the highlights is going to be a reading from Mahogany Brown that's going to be live, but available virtually to the library and to all of our schools as well. So, hopefully, people take advantage of that. But really, just asking everybody to share, because I think it's really thoughtful, the events that are put together for the week. So, thank you.
Thank you. City Clerk, I'll let you proceed.
The City Council regular meeting of Tuesday, November 23rd, 2021, has been canceled.
And I appreciate your assistance on the announcements. There are two things I did want to mention that aren't there. One is this Thursday is Veterans Day, and there will be an observance, a ceremony, at the Golden Gate Cemetery. That is the first time since 2019 it will be in person, and so I wanted to certainly let that be known. And I just wanted, just a little fun fact, that Cappuccino had their big Battle the Strip game on Friday. And the Mayor Schneider and I had a wager, as we did at Thursday's Rotary, honoring the seniors that were leaving in the cheer, as well as the football team. Two things were wagered. One was a tree planted with a plaque on the score and who won, and we're working on that. And the second one was having to wear, I'm wearing my Cappuccino garment that brought us to this party, but at the same time, Mayor Schneider tonight, as she's conducting her meeting in the City of Milbrae, is wearing Cappuccino gear as well, as one of the wagers. So, I just wanted, and I had her permission to make that known, but she was a good sport, and she was there with me and others, and so anyway. Now, we'll move on to our consent calendar. All these items have had earlier action by Council, and may be enacted by one motion, or if there's any exceptions or requests. And at this time, what I would like to ask is if there are, and I know there's quite a few items, but if there are items that are being asked to be pulled for a separate vote. Okay, seeing none. Any items for comment, or, you know, or acknowledging the grants, etc.? Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Item G, as in George, and item J, as in Jack. Comment on it.
Begin J. Councilor Mason.
Just item H, please, 6H. I just have a question on 6H, and one second. And just a question on 6E.
And I have H and E. So, let me start, and if I go out of line or out of order, I apologize. Let's go to E first, and that was receive written update on the city's response approach to COVID-19. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I just wanted to first thank the City Manager. After one of the last meetings, did provide us with the city's procedures around the employees and the response to COVID and processes and such. I was hoping that we could get a percentage of how many employees are vaccinated, and I'm not sure if that needs, if that's already something that needs, I apologize, that needs direction or not, but that's just a request.
City Manager.
Understand the question, but don't have the data to respond at this point.
Understood. Thank you. Let's move on to the next item, and I think I see it as G, adopt resolution authorizing the purchase of seven vehicles with the, with equipment installation and customization in the amount not to exceed 699,865. And that was G, I believe, so that would be Vice Mayor Medina.
Yes, Mayor Medina. Thank you for that. Just wanted to acknowledge of the vehicles being purchased, we are utilizing $205,000 for Measure G funds to purchase a pavement repair truck. That's to assist with the, to improve the pothole repair in our city, and it's important to acknowledge that when we're spending our money for Measure G, where it's going. So, I just wanted to acknowledge that, and thanks to that, and I'm looking forward with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Item, and I apologize, colleagues, if you want to add something, just go ahead and raise your hand if you could. Item H, adopt resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the city manager to send a letter in response to the San Mateo County Grand Jury Study, San Mateo County, California's Ground Zero for Sea Level Rise. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, just a question around the actual, there's a, there's a comment in here around there being a dedicated funding source, and I believe that the city says that, you know, something that we're going to look into. Should there be a dedicated funding source at some point with this, I just want to confirm it would come back to the Council prior to dedicating the source, if that makes sense. I can clarify the question if needed.
The City Manager. So, the Mayor, Councilwoman Mason, can you clarify the question in what particular item, and I'll also ask the City Clerk to bring in our City Engineer, Awan Ritchie, from the attendee pool to the panelist pool.
Councilmember, if you, as they're bringing Ms. Ritchie in, if you could, I think the manager was asking for a little clarity.
Yeah, so specifically, it's page 47 of 204, and it says, "At a public meeting, each city and town council or Board of Supervisors should take at least one concrete action toward establishing a continued funding source for One Shoreline, identify that action in response to the report, and potentially adopt the resolution expressing support for a parcel tax or property tax by June 30th, 2022." And the response was that, "The City of San Bruno remains committed to mitigating sea level rise and the harmful effects of climate change. The city recognizes that capital improvement projects relating to sea level rise are very expensive, and that grant funding is sparse and competitive. This recommendation requires further analysis and study and consultation and coordination with One Shoreline's current efforts. The timeframe for implementation is dependent on ongoing discussions with One Shoreline." So, I just wanted to understand where we would be informed of any further discussions or any action taken one way or the other on this item.
Thank you, Councilwoman Mason. That question and the response is specific to a potential funding measure that the city would not put on, but that would more likely be put on by the county to be a permit funding source for the new One Shoreline agency. And so, should the county decide to do that, the city would benefit from the activities of One Shoreline, and then the city would have a decision, did you want to support that countywide measure? And so, we would certainly bring that to the City Council for a decision if the City Council wanted to state its court or other intentions with regard to that potential county measure to support, countywide measure, to support the One Shoreline agency.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to J, adopt the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with the City-County Association of Governments for the award of a transportation fund for a clean air grant in the amount of 246,760, and approving the appropriation of 368,240 from the Measure A Fund. Vice Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to acknowledge the continuing effort of our staff in obtaining grants of nearly a quarter of a million dollars here to put in 18.2 miles of, to assist with putting in 18.2 miles of bike lanes in San Bruno. I did submit this question to staff earlier, and these bike lanes are all over our city, and if staff has that map available, that would be great to share real quickly, just because it's so widespread. A little hard to see that, though, but.
So, in response to Vice Mayor Medina's question, what's on the screen is the map, it is the citywide map, and a little difficult to see in this format. But in subsequent slides, there is a list of all of the proposed three bike routes across the city, and so there's this one slide, as well as a subsequent slide that provides a little more detail on the per block level for where those locations would be installed. And so, Vice Mayor Medina, if that answered your question, where's the question, if not, staff is available to go into additional detail if needed.
No, City Manager, that's sufficient. I just wanted to make sure that it's acknowledged and how extensive these bike lanes are, because they are desperately in need, and it's such a great feat that we're going to accomplish with this grant and with the additional funding. So, I just wanted to express my appreciation. Thank you.
Okay, I think that takes care of all the items that were requested by Council. With that said, is there any action from Council on the consent?
I will make a motion to accept the items on the consent.
Appreciate that. I'll second. Thank you. Everybody's a little shy tonight. Motion seconded, Hamilton Salazar. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And now, we'll move on to conduct of business. City Clerk.
Item 7A, adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group to conduct a detailed performance and rate review and support negotiations with Recology San Bruno.
And we will turn over this to our City Manager.
Sure. This presentation will be provided by our Finance Director, Chin Yusun, and we have amended the presentation slightly based on our discussions at the prior study session, by just a few clarification from Council, and I'll turn it over to our Finance Director, Chin Yusun.
Thank you, Javon. Good evening, Mayor and members of the Council. Chin Yusun, Finance Director. I will be providing for the integrated waste management contract consulting. The objective is to adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group, Inc. and not exceed 30,000 to conduct a detailed performance and rate review study and support the city's negotiation process with Recology San Bruno. Our agenda includes some background and options for future services, human effort for this consulting contract, and the consultant's proposal summary, and then staff recommendation. Background is something we actually talked about in the study session earlier today. So we have a franchise agreement currently between the city and Recology San Bruno. And this, this franchise agreement is lasting about twenty-seven years from nineteen, July nineteen ninety-eight to June two thousand twenty-four. And in two thousand twenty-two, the city will need to negotiate a judgment to analyze the franchise agreement for waste services and for a few reasons. Reasons are, the detailed rate review is due for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. We will need to address implication and potential costs combined with the Senate Bill thirteen eighty-three. We need to outline terms and conditions for continuation of the city Recology Abandon Waste Program, which we are in current, in pilot stage, the pilot expires by December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-one. You know, council has also requested contract performance reviews. And then we need a timeline to, to request a, to, to issue an RFP. It's about, this timeline needs about two years. If this process is too active, we recommend an RFP process in the later than July seventh, two. And, and we also mentioned earlier that the Integrated Waste Management Service contract requires significant investment in capital and manpower. It is best, always better for the city to start than renegotiate non-procurement processes early. So earlier in this study session, members of council has requested a performance review for section five, up to seven years. So we wanted to get some clarification for, from council regarding section five. Section five is very broad, including billing and reporting. Some of the records in section five doesn't really cover as far back as seven years. So we want to narrow down of the position and confirm if the section five mentioned by council is actually mentioned, is actually referring to section five point nine, that's recycling education and community outreach. So we need some clarification on that, in that aspect. And any change to that could contribute some additional change in the contract cost where, for the council we're talking about. We can, we can get a council confirmation later. I'll just carry on with the presentation. The options for future services, we talked about earlier, two options. One is initiated content negotiation with Recology San Bruno for a new franchise agreement, which will include SB thirteen eighty-three compliance, continuation of Abandon Waste Program, and other services to be determined, and three-year performance review for the contract. And then up to seven years, we'll for certain items in section ninety, section five point nine of section five, and as defined by the council member. And they also, another option is initiate a, an amendment in negotiation with Recology San Bruno in regards to the current management, franchise agreement, which ends on June thirty, two thousand twenty-four. The amendment negotiation will include detailed rate review, SB thirteen eighty-three, and continuation of Abandon Waste Program. And we'll do a three-year performance review and also section five review as defined by the council. You know, we want to remind council members that option, option one does not preclude the city to pursue the RFP work. It only gives the city an additional option to check out what the renegotiation with the Recology San Bruno will come out to be before the city decides whether the city wants to go through RFP process or not. The RFP process option is always on the table, whether you go through option one or option two. I want to, you know, provide some information on procurement effort. Utility service consulting is a niche field. We have a, very few ones specialized in this field are readily available at this time, especially when SB thirteen eighty-three is out. And then many cities and entities like us are looking for consultants to help them to meet their requirements set by the state. And R3 is an independent consulting serving public agencies and not waste haulers. And Javon had talked about this earlier in the study session. We have a history working with R3, they assisted the city in the review of Recology's application for detailed rate increase for fiscal year nineteen twenty, and then achieved about a one percent saving for the city. Our R3 proposal for the current consulting contract includes many tasks, and they are categorized in three categories. Performance review will cost about sixty thousand, detailed rate review about forty thousand, and renegotiation with Recology about thirty thousand. All in all, they're going to, the current proposal totals about hundred, thirty thousand. Of course, we need to consult the clarification on the section five review. That could lead to some change to this number. And also, we want to provide additional information. If the city decides to pursue competitive procurement, meaning going out with an RFP, the estimated cost for that scope of work will be additional a hundred fifty thousand. At that time, we'll come back to the council for contract management if we pursue a competitive agreement, a competitive procurement down road. So staff recommendations, this is the same as we recommended in the study session. We recommend for council to adopt option number three for procurement. We need initiated contract renegotiation with Recology for a new franchise agreement. And we also address SB thirteen eighty-three and continuation of Abandon Waste Program, and other services and also performance review after three years, and a sending you review in certain items in section five, section five. This, we also recommended council adopt resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with R3 Consulting Group, not exceed a hundred thirty thousand to conduct a detailed performance and rate review study and support the city's negotiating effort. And my presentation will come in. Any questions from the council?
Thank you very much for the report and presentation. Questions from colleagues? Councilwoman Mason.
Yeah, I think just from members of the public who may be watching, because council also had questions about this earlier. I think it's important to note that we did have a special meeting tonight from five to seven PM, where the council has already directed staff to look into option one to negotiate a new contract with the option to issue an RFP, depending on what the terms are of that new contract, and obviously as legally allowed. So, so right now, we're just focusing on the approval of the contract for the consultant. And so I just wanted to answer the question that was posed, because the question early around section five of the contract. So specifically, the council did ask that they look into seven years. Seven years look back on section five. And I know for me, I can't speak for the whole council, but five point nine point three point two, around five point nine point three point three, which is the, generally, it's called general. And then there's a section on youth education. But also in section five, there is a section around customer logs that the city has a right to over the course of a couple of years, and I think that would help to determine performance. Five point nine one requires Recology to hire a recycling coordinator, of which fifty percent of their time is to be allowed to the city, and has this been utilized? Section five point nine point two has city and the Recology applying for grants together. And section five point nine point three, we've already talked about, and that's the cash for class. So those are the areas that I'm, I know for me, I'm most interested in, and hopefully there's a consensus on the council for those particular sections. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Medina.
Wow, these buttons are a little hard to push sometimes. I apologize for the delay. I wanted to provide a little background with that one percent and what that meant when we had R3 work with us last time. I'm looking at the Daily Journal news break article here. And that one, the percent savings was a hundred and seventy-five thousand by, by having them perform the audit. Having, having someone, having a consultant with that expertise is, is crucial. We don't have anybody on staff to do that. If we can go back to the breakdown on the cost on the slide, please. For the, if, if someone can just give a little more detail on the performance review. I understand the detailed rate review, that's what we had done previously. I understand renegotiation with Recology. But if, if, just a little more detail on what the performance review would include, that'd be great.
I think Gar Schultz, he's on the line. I think it would be nice for him to talk about the performance review and his proposal.
Yes, happy to do so. Once again, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, Gar Schultz with R3 Consulting Group, thank you for consideration of this item. So the performance review in summary is a look at the various terms and conditions and performance standards that Recology's obligated to meet under the agreement, and an assessment of their compliance with or non-conformance with each of those various terms and conditions. And so it'll give you kind of an overview of what we put in our scope of work. It's pretty extensive. So one is it's looking at the various term and conditions that just noted, that's looking at, sorry, hold on a minute. Management and administration, confirming their organizational chart, staffing practices, personnel management practices, safety records, reviewing their collection operations, that's literally field audits, following along lawn trucks, making sure that they're meeting standards with respect to pickups, collections, missed services, making sure that the containers that are being serviced out there are in good condition, replaced to the right proper location, upright and let's close, as an example. Confirming that the rate records, so the records that are maintained both by the city through its utility billing system, but then more importantly, tracking that what folks are paying for their services actually receiving in the field, which is the operational practice, making sure that folks are essentially getting what they're paying for, looking at vehicle and equipment maintenance, repair and replacement records, assessing their customer service records and complaint records, council member Mason noted, looking at their payment of franchise fees. Scrolling through, I think that's kind of it at a fairly high level, but to bring it back to a close, management administration, customer service, billing, franchise fee payments, field operations and conditions in the field, customer service complaints, and of course those sections in section five point nine that were raised this evening.
And to the mayor, Javon, and city manager, to piggyback off that. I think it's important to note that that performance review is for the entire contract, and that will be for three years. And so the scope of work that Gar just reviewed is page two of their proposal, and it's on page one seventy-four of two hundred and four pages in the packet. And so that, the detailed scope of work that he just reviewed there. And so that, that will be for the three years, beginning eighteen, nineteen. And then the seven-year review would be on section five and the subsection of section five that council defines. And so the prior slide we had up was highlighting section five point nine. The council desires the seven-year review to be on all of five or additional section of section five outside of five point nine. I think it's important to let us know, and then we'll, we'll adjust accordingly.
Vice Mayor, any other questions or?
No, that was it. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from colleagues? Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, just one more. I just, I guess it's the sum count of money, it's kind of alarming, but when we look at the entire picture of how much it costs to reprocure, it sounds like this is, we would pay this anyway. And if we were to reprocure and make that decision later, then it would be three hundred thousand. So we're actually spending less than half the cost to look at our options. And then this is a potential for reprocurement later. So we, we would have to pay this cost anyways, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, a portion of the cost would have to be paid for regardless. And the cost of reprocuring and the cost of the full RFP process is that additional one fifty. But the detailed rate analysis and components of the performance review, so we can put together all that comprehensive data that Mr. Schultz talked about in the prior meeting, would absolutely be necessary if we went out to an RFP process.
Okay, so that, so I just, like, this can be seen almost as a savings of, if at some point we don't reprocure, we would be saving about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars potentially by taking. Okay. Okay, and, okay, great. And then just, just because this came up earlier, we, we also requested that, should the review result in a finding that Recology had not performed, that we also look into the remedy for that? And then if there should be a new agreement, what would that look like moving forward as far as what we would be providing to the schools, since the recycling program is apparently now outdated? So just an information for the public who may be watching and weren't on the earlier meeting. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to open it to the public. We do have someone who wishes to speak, and if anybody else wishes to speak on this topic, please raise your hand at this time. And we'll ask the city clerk if you could bring the speakers in.
Yes, the first speaker is Paul Lipinski.
Good evening. I'm not really familiar with this item, but when I read it, I just got a couple of items I wanted to ask about. First off, is this just to see if we want to retain Recology? And is there any competition for their, their contract? Or is this just, we're talking about negotiating with them by themselves? And also, there's no discussion of rates. Would that be negotiated after the, if you decided to keep them? That would be another discussion for that. And then in the packet on item three, there was a, it says, what would be, or my question, I guess, would be, what would constitute an unsuccessful negotiation with them triggering the hundred fifty thousand dollars to be spent for a new request for proposal? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I'm not seeing any other persons at this time. So with that, we're going to close public comment, bring it back to council, and ask the city manager or staff if they could, because obviously not everybody was at the five o'clock, they could summarize maybe some of the questions that we just heard. Please.
To the mayor, absolutely. But you know, I'll ask Gar Schultz to come on and address those questions. I know we talked about them in detail at the five o'clock. But Mr. Schultz, will you talk a little bit about the data and the recommendation to, one, attempt the renegotiation process? And what's seen in the marketplace for an RFP process, and the benefit that we have in timing? And that this process doesn't preclude the RFP.
Yes, yes. Ultimately, in summary, the schedule that was presented to the council in the five PM study session essentially allows for approximately a six-month window during which you can seek to renegotiate with Recology for the terms and conditions. for the terms and conditions of importance to the council, such as the abandoned waste program, key terms and conditions to support the city's efforts and compliance with SBC 1383, and also to effectuate a longer-term agreement. Now, with respect to, you know, whether those outcomes are deemed successful or not, is dependent on one of two outcomes. One is that, you know, between our three and the city staff and Recology, we may at some point during the renegotiation process come to an impasse, at which point we will come back to the council and say negotiations have not been successful and are not fruitful. I apologize for my cat in the background. Secondly, we may have a negotiated outcome that, you know, can be presented to the council, and then it will be up to the council to determine whether it wants to accept that renegotiation effort. In either of those cases, you still preserve essentially a two-year timeframe during which if you decide either that negotiations aren't meeting your expectations or negotiations just fail outright, you can still proceed with an RFP process. I believe that covers the question. Oh, and then Councilmember Mason, with respect to your questions around any deficiencies that are identified during the operations review process. Yes, our common practice is to recommend, you know, what the remedy for those deficiencies may be, if remedy exists. And certainly knowing that the council and that we would be supposedly, hopefully engaged to support you in renegotiation efforts, also point towards what are the new best practices in the industry around areas such as school education, but other areas of deficiency that may be identified during the process. Any other questions or comments for colleagues? Okay, this is an action item, and it is a resolution. Is there any action to council?
I will make a motion that we agree with the resolution.
Second?
Motion by Salazar, seconded by Vice Mayor Marty Medina. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Item B, city clerk under conduct.
Item 7B, consider recommendation from the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee and adopt resolution approving appointments to the San Bruno Community Foundation Board of Directors. I am bringing into the room, let me start my video, actually. Wrong video. Hello, Mayor and Council. I am bringing over Leslie Hadamia. She is the San Bruno Community Foundation Director. She will be kind of co-presenting this with me. I'm going to present it to you directly. This is, let me pull up my presentation here. For some reason, my PowerPoint is not working. Sorry about that. Technical difficulties are fine. So yes, we held a number of interviews and meetings with the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee. That's a tongue twister. And this is because we have vacancies that are to occur. Can you see my screen? I should verify that first. And, okay, I was having so many problems. It wasn't working. Okay. This is for the San Bruno Community Foundation Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee Appointment Recommendations. The members of the ad hoc committee consisted of two council members, Councilmember Tom Hamilton, who was the chair of the committee, and Councilmember Michael Salazar, as well as two members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. We had President Emily Roberts and then Member Melissa Natane Jones. And Leslie Hadamia was the driving force behind this, and I assisted with the recruitment efforts and gathering applications from the public. The agenda for this presentation is to review the ad hoc committee meeting schedule, the list of interviewed applicants, the key criteria for the applicants, and then the recommended applicants for your consideration this evening, as well as any questions that you may have. The first slide here shows the schedule of the meetings that were held by the ad hoc committee and those members. The first was on August 11, 2021, where the committee reviewed draft recruitment brochure and applications. They agreed to the timeline. And I should also note that is where Councilmember Hamilton was chosen as chair for the committee. And then on September 20, the, the applications that had been received were reviewed by the committee members. It was determined at that time to go ahead and interview all of the applicants, because all of the applicants met the criteria. And the committee also agreed to the evaluation process and the criteria for that process. And they discussed the interview questions that would be asked of the applicants. And the first interview session occurred on September 27, 2021, where four applicants were interviewed by the committee. The second round was on October 4, 2021, where six applicants were interviewed. And then on October 13, 2021, one applicant was interviewed. And then the committee, after that interview concluded, the committee discussed the applicants and the interviews that were held, and they agreed upon the recommended slate of applicants and the recommended alternates. There was two alternates chosen, however, since the time of reaching out to that applicant so they know that they were chosen as an alternate, they did withdraw. So we now have one alternate for your consideration this evening. And I should say that the reason why, you may wonder why the interview sessions were split into three sessions, it was also based on the availability of the applicants. So we were, we were considerate of the time that the applicants had, as well as the members. The list of interviewed applicants are here in alphabetical order. We will start with Steve Dissehorst, Brian Hafter, Pac Lynn, Stephen Marshall, Melissa Moreno, Supria Perry, Sean Quinn, Gus Sinks, Myrtle Smith, Stacy Stevenson, and Irving Torres. Each of these applicants were interviewed by the committee on the various days of the meeting. And I won't read all of these bullets for you, but these were the criteria that the committee was looking for in the applicants to consider for appointments. There was a specific need for the skill sets. As you can see here, finance and investment management, public relations, communications experience. The list goes on. We were, they were really trying to also focus, this is a nonprofit board, and so they're keeping that in mind, too. And the committee also considered the assets of the three continuing board members that are staying on currently, which is Raul Gomez, Melissa Natane Jones, Jim Ruane. And then there will be sadly four board members that are, that are leaving us this year. Nancy Kraus, John McLaughlin, Emily Roberts, and Treasurer Tim Ross. And we did want to thank them for their service here. They've done a great job. And the key criteria continued was for the goal for the committee, which was to identify the slate of four applicants that complement each other and the continuing board members, so that the board as a whole has a mix of skill sets, experience, qualities, and perspectives, and a group of individuals who will work collegially and effectively with each other. Therefore, the recommended applicants for your consideration tonight, and the one alternate, is applicants Pac Lynn, Melissa Moreno, I can't even say my own name, Melissa Moreno, Supria Perry, and Irving Torres. And the alternate is Steve Dissehorst. The second alternate that was considered was Brian Hafter, however, he has since withdrawn from consideration. So the alternate is Steve Dissehorst. And with that, if there are any questions, Leslie and I are here. We are happy to help. We all, I should also note that we have, of course, Councilmember Hamilton and Salazar here, as well as Chair or President Emily Roberts and Melissa Natane Jones.
Thank you for the presentation. That was quick. I was gonna say, if there's anybody from the public who also wants to speak on this, you can go ahead and raise your hand at this time, but we already have Councilmember Hamilton. I was gonna say, maybe, Leslie Hadamia, is there, was there anything you wish to add? Will we start asking for questions?
No, Melissa covered everything. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so questions? Maybe do we want to hear from our subcommittee? Would that be appropriate this time? And then if there's any hands come up, we'll do that. Councilmember Hamilton, thank you.
So I just wanted to say a few comments, and I want to reserve the rest of my comments till after, till after public comment. So, you know, this, this, as you can saw from the timeline, this, this process was long and complex. The team that was, that was put together on this ad hoc committee worked extremely well together. We were, we were given very specific instructions on what, what to do, and we delivered on those. I think we did quite a good job, and I was honored to serve with the other members of this, of this subcommittee. I wanted to acknowledge everyone's hard work and diligence in, in going through a process that was fair and equitable and transparent and going to the, to the goals that we were given when the subcommittee was formed. So I just wanted to start by saying that. Thank you. I'm gonna have other comments after, after public comment.
Any other comments? Councilmember Salazar?
Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I would concur with what Councilmember Hamilton just said. It was, it was a great experience working with this, with this subcommittee. There was a lot of time spent in developing criteria and discussing what, what we would be achieving as our end goal. And having the opportunity to, to work with them was definitely enriching. I, I wanted to, to thank the members of the foundation that dedicated all of their time. And I want to say especially Emily Roberts, she's on her way out after serving two full terms and one of the founding members of the, of the foundation. So definitely appreciated her insight and input into what we did on this subcommittee. And also wanted to thank Leslie Hadamia for her participation. She was there for the full process and helping us work through and facilitating the, the interviews and our internal discussions. So definitely a very, very good process and enjoyed being part of that, serving with this group.
Okay, thank you. Is there, I'm gonna ask again if there's anybody, members from the public that want to speak. This is the opportunity in which to raise your hand. Once we bring it back to the council, we're going to keep it at the council and close any public input at that point. Seeing no hands?
Just respectfully, would you like us to speak?
Oh, I'm, yes.
As of the public, or as?
I, I'm gonna have you, both of you have the opportunity if you wish, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And plus, you're, you're here with us, so I certainly want to give you that option. Once again, okay, we have one person from the public. We'll bring in the one person. And please, city clerk, and then we'll bring it to council and others.
Vomcy Polagumi. I apologize if I got that wrong.
Perfect. No, great job. My name is Vomcy Polagumi. Been following the process along. Just really wanted to give a shout out to this entire process. It seems to be very fair and equitable and super transparent, and I appreciate all of the hard work that folks have really put into this, all the time and hours and, you know, efforts really put into this to, to make sure this process is really fair and inclusive and transparent. So thank you so much, and I'm really looking forward to the, to the new members on this, on this board. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Seeing no other members wishing to speak, I certainly do with our two Community Foundation board members who are also on the ad hoc committee, and as was indicated, as Councilmember Hamilton said, work very well together on this long and complex process. Like to hear from either of you if you wish to have any comments, please. Not that you have to, if you wish to.
Melissa, would you like to go?
Sure, I'll go ahead and go first.
Thank you.
Good evening, San Bruno City Council. My name is Melissa Natane Jones. I've been a resident in the city of San Bruno for over 40 years. And I've had the distinct pleasure of serving on the San Bruno Community Foundation Board of Directors, where I've been in appointment since 2019. I have served on the SBCF Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee, which Councilmember Tom Hamilton chaired. And I wanted to come before you to express my whole heart support for the candidate recommendations that the committee has brought forth for the appointment to the SBCF Board of Directors in 2022. I would like to ensure you, as well as the community, the process that the ad hoc committee participated in was not just done to the letter of the bylaws, but also in the spirit and intention in which they were created. As four of our dear board members prepared to step down from the board, the responsibility that I took in this process, I took very seriously. As steward of the funding awarded to the city as a result of the tragic pipeline explosion, neither I nor my fellow board members take our roles for granted. The board nomination process was fair and equitable, and as an executive director of a nonprofit in 15 years in this sector, I know how crucial it is that these types of processes ensure care to reflect the city and the foundation's priority of inclusion and representation. With Councilmember Hamilton, Councilmember Salazar, President Emily Roberts, and myself, I assure you that that's what took place. This thoughtful and collaborative approach was done with integrity, countless hours of due diligence, a scoring rubric, a competency rubric, a debrief process, and a decision. We also considered skill sets highlighting the need for treasurer, their experience, diversity, passion, and even gauged how this board appointment would be prioritized. The candidates were selected with our collective judgment and our expertise. And although there were many exceptional candidates, we collectively agreed that the four being recommended met the criteria to join a highly functional and passionate SBCF Board of Directors. In order for the foundation to continue to do its work and service in the community, this appointment is important. And I hope that you have considered our notes, as well as our process and your decision, and how a potential delay could impact the board and staff who are required to safeguard the foundation's mission. I want to also thank my fellow ad hoc committee members. It was a pleasure to serve with both council members as well as Emily, and that's all I have to say. So thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Now, well, the president of the board.
Thank you, Mayor Medina, and good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. As has been mentioned, my name is Emily Roberts, and I'm the current San Bruno Community Foundation President, also a founding board member, completing my eighth year on this board, also a member of the SBCF Board Nomination Ad-Hoc Committee, the body that was charged with the facilitation of the nomination and the recommendations that you see before you tonight. And as has been noted, the committee was created at the direction of city council. And I believe I speak for all of us in that we took this charge very seriously, presumably with the acknowledgement that the best structure for vetting potential applicants for foundation board positions should include meaningful participation from both council members and foundation board members, who have held the responsibility of financial stewardship and provided strategic direction and oversight to all foundation decisions since the board's inception as members of this unique nonprofit board. I want to begin also by thanking my fellow committee members and by speaking to the integrity, the collaboration, and thoughtfulness that went into this process. The experience of working on this committee has been nothing but positive, and I deeply appreciate the leadership of Chair Hamilton and contributions of Councilmember Salazar, as well as my colleague on the foundation board, Melissa Natane Jones. The discourse was respectful. The applicants were assessed on mutually established criteria. And perhaps above all else, the members of this committee seem to hold as our North Star the goal of focusing on the best slate of applicants for the work of the foundation and the community that we serve at this time. We were fortunate to have a strong slate of applicants. And although there were many strengths noted among those applicants, I think it speaks volumes that the strength committee unanimously recommended the slate of four applicants that you're considering for you tonight. That said, I'm hopeful that you will support the recommendation before you without delay. And given the implications, the implications, you know, I wholeheartedly stand with the committee charged to carry out the process in supporting the approval of the nominations before you and in doing so honoring the integrity of the process, the equitable and meaningful contributions from both council and foundation representatives and the significant time and effort of all of those who have participated. Um, and again, thank you for your consideration tonight.
Thank you both for, uh, serving on the ad hoc committee and thank you also for serving on the San Bruno Community Foundation. And, uh, President Roberts, thank you for your years of service, uh, to that. Uh, your devotion and passion and, and dedication are, are well noted and appreciated. Uh, with us, since we have everybody here, is there any questions that, uh, would like to be asked of any of the ad hoc members or, um, on the presentation that was given by the city clerk, since we have everybody and, and here at this time? Okay, seeing none, then, um, at this time, we'll bring it to council, uh, just to the council as far as, uh, comments. Or, and our action or comments? Uh, Vice Mayor Medina.
There's, um, yes, um, first of all, thank you all for your, for your service on, on the foundation board and also for everyone involved with the, uh, recruitment and, and interviewing process. Um, with that said, um, I want to make sure this is absolutely clear. I'm not, well, last night we had a, a, a meeting on council policies and procedures and we did spend a, a, a good amount of time discussing, um, the process of adding, uh, foundation members to the San Bruno Community Foundation. And there was this meeting on how the, um, how we're moving forward with this and, and, and my primary part of it, and I want to make sure I, I'm absolutely clear with everyone here, that there is no questioning of the integrity, the fairness of the process or the hours and care and concern that was, um, given in, in getting to us to this point. When the council discussed this policy of, of appointing new members, um, one of the things that was stated there was that the, the council would have the right to interview the applicants. Um, somehow or another, um, we are here now with a list, a slate, and I'm not comfortable with proceeding without allowing those council members, myself, to be involved in the interview process. The foundation, as you know, has a very high role in our community and the importance of that, um, deserves a full council to do our job as electeds in our city to oversee the appointment of the foundation members. This is something that is done for every commission, committee, um, board in our city. Um, so, oh, uh, we, we talked about this a lot last night and, 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 and the main point would be the council deserves and did not relinquish its right to interview the applicants. So I'll pause now to allow other council members to, to have their, their say. Um, and we can go from there. Thank you.
Any other comments from council? Um, Councilor Mason, thank you.
Yeah, so I just want to start by thanking the committee for providing the recommendations to the council tonight. Um, it's clear that all applicants were qualified, which I'm really thrilled to see and to read through. Um, when reviewing the process that came about to the city council, it was my belief that all five council members, uh, would interview, should interview all of the applicants since the city council is charged with the appointment and the approval of the annual budget of the foundation. Um, this was, uh, this was not the unanimous vote clearly and there was a consensus vote that moved forward and that resulted in the, um, the, um, two and two committee that recommended the individuals that we have before us, um, in the staff report. Upon establishing the process that moved forward by consensus, the council was also reassured, um, that we'd all have the opportunity to interview all of the applicants. So my interpretation of this was that it would be similar to interviews in which an interview panel is established. You'd have an initial interview, um, and then when the appointment board or the hiring body, um, then has the opportunity to have a second round of interviews with those applicants. Um, this is the first time that this process is used and it's also the only process that is run this way out of all of the numerous commissions, committees, um, that I've been involved in since I've been in the council. Um, it's also the only appointments that will decide how thirty to forty million dollars, uh, will be spent in the coming years and the four appointments equal half of the body. So after an almost, uh, two-year hiatus of in-person meetings, all of these interviews were held in person. They were held at various hours throughout the day, uh, understandably because you had to figure out when people could make it. Uh, they were not recorded and they were not available to watch virtually, uh, making it so that I was unable to participate. Um, the council members that were not a committee were not asked for input on the questions. Um, and no, none of the questions that I had reviewed, which I believe were the only questions asked because there was a standard, a standardized process, um, including listening session one point O or listening session two point O, which was essentially such an important part of, um, what the community foundations work is around, which are the community's request for, um, whichever items they prioritize, the thirty to forty million dollars to be used towards. Um, and I think that considering the amount of money, considering that the community foundation is really at a, uh, fork in the road where when I was asked for questions by a consultant during the listening survey, uh, it was really, um, the questions that were asked to me were what does the future of the foundation look like? Uh, we're currently reassessing what that looks like. Is the foundation gonna be going out funny? Is the foundation going to, um, you know, use the money that is spent and then that may be the, the end of the foundation? The, um, but really the idea of what will happen to the foundation moving forward, um, which from my understanding of reading the report, is that there was a community support around the foundation moving forward and growing and going out for funds. Uh, none of those, um, questions appeared, uh, to be in-depth or really to have a, a basic understanding, I think, of what, from what, what I read of what the applicants, um, believed, uh, the future of the foundation should be. So I think provided that the funds that we're talking about here, um, are so great, the, uh, impacts are so great. It's, it's fifty percent of the votes that we're talking about, um, provided that the process that was established, uh, was established with the idea that, um, there would be the opportunity for, to interview all the applicants. Um, and provided that, um, these positions could be up to eight years, uh, I don't believe that a short delay would be truly impactful to the long-term goals of the foundation. And so, uh, for these reasons, I respect the decisions. Um, I, this is not a, meant to be a criticism on anybody and I thank everybody who was involved in the process. Uh, but given the substantial stakes that are involved, um, I would like the opportunity to interview the applicants as well, uh, as we were reassured would be, uh, part of the process if requested. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other, uh, comments? Councilmember Salazar.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, um, in hearing the comments, uh, from my colleagues and, um, I, I believe, very similar to what we discussed last night, um, I mean, the reason this item is on our agenda tonight is because the full council does have the opportunity to vote on who the, uh, who the new members of the organization will be. And, uh, e- even though the, the two-by-two process, uh, that was selected was not unanimous, it was, um, it was decided by majority of the council that that would be the process going forward. The, um, the agreement was unfortunately very, um, ill-defined in terms of what, what would the council's ultimate, uh, action would be. And it said that it could include interviews, it, uh, could include a lot of different things, but it didn't define that interviews were guaranteed to the council. And at least two council members, the members of the subcommittee, um, were under the impression that recommending a slate of appointees was appropriate. And the rest of the committee, uh, was functioning under the same, um, understanding of, of what the role would be and what the outcome should be. And, uh, you know, as we heard from all the members of, of the subcommittee, we all felt that it was a, a thorough, open, uh, honest and fair process that we went through. And I wholeheartedly support the, the slate of applicants that, that were presented. I, I understand and respect the, the viewpoints of, of my two colleagues that just spoke. Uh, but at the same time, I'm confident that even if you were to go through the entire process again that, that Councilmember Hamilton and I went through, uh, the results would be the same. And to, to delay this process, uh, only to repeat what, what's already been done, uh, would not, wouldn't serve the city well and wouldn't serve the board well. And, uh, although our C manager made the comment last night that, you know, delaying this until next year is, is not a problem, I, I disagree. I disagree. Half, half of the board is, is, uh, terming out and we do need to see people, uh, efficiently and, and quickly and allow them to go through their process of selecting officers, which again, we also have, uh, the, the authority to, uh, override. So, you know, we're, we're not giving up, uh, none of us on this body are giving up any of our rights. Um, and, uh, you know, I, I would, uh, you know, humbly ask that, that the full council support the slate that we're bringing forward to you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So, um, one, one quick, um, clarification on, um, Councilmember Salazar's comment, it's over half of the, um, of the, uh, existing board is terming out. So, um, with those, with those who are, uh, out and if we have not replaced them, the board, the foundation board will, will not even be able to meet because they will not have a quorum. Um, it, it, this is a, this is a really tough place that we've ended up in. And, um, I think Councilmember Salazar summed it up pretty well, that it was, you know, we, we had, we tried a new process that was ill-defined here at the end. And thinking logically about if the, if the end, if the, if the step at this point, after the subcommittee did its work, was that the full council would interview every applicant, then why did the subcommittee need it all? It doesn't make, it doesn't make any sense. What would, what would, what would the point of having the subcommittee in the first place have been? So clearly the process that we put, that we agreed to, but I will absolutely not support doing this again in two years when it's time to, to, um, appoint additional members. We're gonna need to come up with something better. The, whatever we do come up with, I am, um, steadfast in my position that it needs, it, I'm fully supportive of when we do this again, of having all council members participate in all interviews. But there needs to be representation from the existing board as well in those interviews. Um, I mentioned this last night, but I'll mention it again here for the benefit of public who were not on the meeting last night. Um, during the interviews, which were very interesting and very rich and very, um, we got wonderful questions from the applicants. We, you know, I, I overused the term, we have had an embarrassment of riches in the, in the people that we interviewed. Um, we, I mean, we couldn't, we couldn't even, there, there wasn't even an opportunity to, to put anybody to the side, um, even just look at the applications. But a lot of the questions that we got, questions that neither Councilmember Salazar nor I could answer. And neither could, neither could, um, the mayor or the, the other council members either, because they were very specific questions about the day-to-day operation of the board. But we had President Roberts and Member Nethanen Jones there, who were able to jump right in and answer, and answer those questions and provide that direction. And it was, it was incredibly valuable. Um, going back to, uh, Councilmember Mason's comments, while it is true there wasn't any specific questions about the, the, um, the, uh, community surveys, there were at least two questions that addressed, what do you see the direction of this foundation? And what I found, and I mentioned it this last night, so apologies for the repeat, but it's important for everyone here, um, a majority of the applicants questioned why the foundation doesn't do its own fundraising. It was, and it, and was interested in exploring that, in, in having it not just spend the money till it's all gone and, and, and that's it, but how to, how to make the foundation a long-term self-sustaining thing. So they were thinking about the future and the, and the direction that it's going. So going back, stopping at this point and having the five of us be interview all eleven applicants, whether you, whether you believe or not, whether you're willing to say it or not, it takes all the effort that we've done and puts it to the side. And while I am, while I am fully supportive of revisiting this process and coming up with a better one, tonight I am not supportive of delaying and, uh, re-interviewing all the members. And I, and I encourage my colleagues to, um, accept the nominations that are brought forth from the subcommittee. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Um, was there any other remarks from colleagues this time? Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and if it's, uh, all right, Paul and myself, um, to, uh, say some things. So I want to address, I want to, first, I, I respect and appreciate all of my colleague co-comment, comments, and I also know that all of us are appreciative of the four ad hoc members and the work, and I said this last night, the work and the dedication, uh, and the seriousness in which they took their task. Some things, you know, when we're talking about the listening campaign of one point O, that, that to me was when it came to an initial fifty million of a settlement money and what did the community wish to see going forward. And that was clearly defined, action, remediation, action by council by four to one, and we are where we're at today. So to me, that's different. Um, but now we're in two point O. So to go back to that, I, I think is, we're, we're going in history, we're not looking forward, is my opinion. Interviews, interviews are not recorded. Interviews, interviews are not recorded. We've never, uh, to my knowledge, in my tenure, prior to that, recorded interviews. I think it's, it's also just a courtesy and respect to, to those folks that are being interviewed as well. But at the same time, it was open to the public. So up to 10 people were permitted to come into City Hall and to be, uh, to listen to the process. It's also mentioned about officers. This is the only committee commissioner board that the council approves the recommendation of officers on how the money's going to be spent. The board comes up with recommendations. The city council approves it. So it's still here. Not only do we review the budget, not only do we approve the officers, not only do we appoint the members, we do all of that here at this level. I can appreciate everybody wanting to ask a certain question or be part of it, but as a, as was indicated, a majority of consensus had laid out a process, not clearly maybe defined in great intricacy, but I think in the staff report, it gives the options and alternates, and those are listed as was indicated by others. I believe that you have four members that are departing. The bylaws are clear that on January 1, you should be seated. They will be off, and if we only have three members, they cannot meet. I also disagree with the statement that we can just wait on a treasurer. We can wait on members into 2022. You know, this is a nonprofit, 501(c)(3). There are regulations and stipulations from the state of California that we need to adhere to. We also want to make sure that they get, um, onboarded and up, up to speed, um, so they're not thrown into a role that is important and has had success and since been established. I will say, I was one who said, you know what, we ought to have council liaisons on that. Now, I, it was a three to two. I lost the vote, but you know what? I might, I move forward and accept the outcome and have come to realize, I could go back in time, I would have gone the other way. Because I think it has been very independent. I think it has been, um, given that credibility from organizations willing to give money and have that 501(c)(3) available that has really helped this community in many ways and the school district and et cetera, and the grants and the scholarships. So for me, for the work that's been done and to go back to these folks who are just trying to volunteer their time and say, you know, what was done, we're gonna take that off the table, we're gonna start from scratch again. I don't think that that's the right thing to do at this time to those that simply want to give to the community. And if we have four persons, two from each ad hoc committees, that are bringing a unified, collective, collaborative slate together, then I trust them. And I will, uh, in my mind, I want to move forward. Any final comments from council?
To the mayor.
Yes, Mr. Vice Mayor.
I have a question for either our city attorney or our city manager regarding the option. I'm looking at the email, um, stating that the city council may choose to conduct interviews for all candidates, a subset of candidates are appointed simply based on a review of applications and the Step 1 panel's recommendations. Where, where does that sit legally?
Mr. City Attorney.
Sure, if I may, to the mayor, um, I think it's been acknowledged, um, that the city council can decide who they want to interview or whether they want to interview one, some or all of the candidates. So I think that's the answer.
Right. I'm sorry, go ahead. If I can just follow up with that, then, then that was, that was the, the process that the council was provided in, in, in moving forward. That was an option. Correct?
Sure. Let me respond to that. Javon, I'm the city manager. Vice Mayor Medina, in response to your question, I think you were referring to the email that was sent to the city council, uh, in March, I think March of 18th, uh, when, uh, in preparation for the study session, and that document was discussed in detail at the study session and the city council, I believe in a four to one vote elected for the process. Uh, and the process included the subcommittee, two members of the, uh, city council, two members of the foundation board to undertake a process to, and it says in there, recommend candidates. It also provided for, and, and was expressly articulated by, by the city council, that once those recommendations came to the city council, the city council wanted to preserve their right to interview all candidates and more or less run their normal appointment process, but they wanted to allow the subcommittee the ability to do the first round of interviews and provide recommendations. And so, uh, that was the process that was adopted, that was the process that was followed, that is the process that is before you tonight, uh, in that you have the recommendations from the subcommittee and the city council as a body, uh, can decide to accept those recommendations or elect for a, uh, another process. And that process can include interviewing all the candidates. What the policy also, uh, or the process also provided for is that the council could make it another decision. For example, you could say, uh, in this process of the four recommendations, we would like to appoint three of them and, uh, uh, decide, uh, through another process, who would fill that fourth seat. And so that was also integral to the policy because the city council wanted it clear that while they were establishing the subcommittee, they were not relinquishing any of the powers that the city council has to appoint members to that.
Okay. So, can we interview additional, uh, applicants for those that were not involved?
The city council can decide. So it will, it, it could take a majority of the city council to decide, of course. Uh, you have before you the recommendation, uh, from the city and the city council can decide to accept that recommendation at a point, uh, or say, we would like to embark on another process and, and interview all the candidates, um, or, or another process. But it is, as a council, it's, it's the council's decision. Uh, and so it's, it's gonna take a majority to provide that direction.
And I'm sorry, Vice Mayor, in Zoom, man, I can't tell if it's frozen or you're just pausing.
It's definitely, Mr. Mayor, I apologize. This selection is so important. And understandably, if there are three of you that want to proceed with this and don't want to allow other councilors to interview, then I guess I'm waiting for a motion. I think it's unfortunate. It is an imperfect process. But, um, I believe we could, um, quickly move forward if, if other councilmembers are satisfied with interviewing and not interested in moving forward, having to interview anymore, that, then, then I respect that, their, their minds could stay where they're at, that's absolutely fine. I, I'm not able to know and hear on why I would vote over one person over the other. And it's not about trusting. I trust, I trust people's judgment, it's just, it's, we're people, we have different views on things. We don't just allow Councilman Salazar and Councilman Hamilton to vote on everything the council does. We're, we're elected to do our job and, and we're not being allowed to do our job here. That's how I feel. It's very difficult, what I'm gonna abstain, because it's not fair for the people I didn't, I didn't hear what, what, what their answers were to any of these questions. I respected the process. I didn't go to the meeting, that would have been so awkward, right? Go to the meeting to hear the answers. I was relying on being able to interview these applicants. So, um, last night I asked if, if, if Councilman Salazar, Councilman Hamilton, if you were in my shoes, wouldn't you want to be part of the interview process? I know, but that's your decision. My decision is, I want to be there. And it's not a matter of, of, of the integrity of fairness, it's, it's a councilman's, a councilperson's responsibility to, to appoint and to be involved, not to be on the sidelines. And this, this is putting two councilmembers who want interviews to be put on the sidelines. So, it was, it's an imperfect, government, it's, government's imperfect, but when you realize that there's a mistake, doesn't mean that you proceed with that mistake. You fix what's, you fix what's wrong. And I think this is wrong, ladies and gentlemen. So, here we are.
Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, I think there's clearly different interpretations of the process, and that in and of itself is very concerning. Um, I, I wanted to just kind of follow up on the earlier comment about that other interviews are not recorded. Um, that is true, they're not recorded, but we also haven't had any interviews in person since at least March of 2021. And so, um, the fact that, um, these were in person, I don't think was necessarily something that was an expectation of the public who may be interested or of ourselves that, you know, may, may have wanted to attend. And, um, I think the fact that this is the only situation we're in, there are interviews happening where the council isn't present. I mean, I think that Melissa goes a bit and beyond when we interview committee members to not just get a quorum, but to make sure that all councilmembers are present, uh, when interviewing every single candidate for every single committee and commission that we have. In fact, I can't remember a time that a councilmember of the five of us was not present in that, in the interviews. That's how seriously we all take these commitments from, you know, our community. So I just want to point out that it, it's not recorded, but it's also the first time that all the councilmembers, um, are not present at the interviews. And it's also the first in-person interviews that have happened since COVID. Um, and the fact that only 10 people would be allowed in, if they even knew about it, uh, would mean that of the 26 people on tonight's meeting, um, only, you know, um, 10 would be allowed in, right? So we'd actually be leaving out a majority of the people who are present at, on tonight's virtual meeting. I also just wanted to say that, you know, that the questions regarding the future of the foundation, um, regarding, and just looking at the questions, what are your thoughts about the foundation's current strategy? What are your thoughts on a long-term vision for the foundation? They are very broad questions, they're not necessarily specific to the listening session, which I think would have been really, um, helpful to understand, you know, what's been read, what's the understanding. But also, um, we didn't get any answers, right? There's no notes on what the answers were on these, and they're incredibly important, again, considering that we're talking about the remainder of the funds and, um, the community's input that's already happened. And I think the last part is just really reiterating the importance of tightening up the process. This is the only time that something has been done like this. It's very concerning to me that at least two of the members of the council, um, agree that, uh, this was not the interpretation that was had. Um, and it was actually never discussed whether you need a consensus to interview all applicants or whether just one councilmember can make the request. And so I think that it's fair today that in practice, we generally use consensus, but that has never been in writing, we never discussed it. And, uh, and that night, what we had all agreed to is that, uh, should there be a request for interviews of all the applicants, uh, that that, that we were reassured over and over that that would be possible. And, um, and it's sounding like that is, is not going to be possible and that, uh, we, we won't have a say in, you know, how over 50% of the board who will decide to help $30 to $40 million in standard, those being spent, um, well, we just won't have the opportunity to have those interviews.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So, the, this is an, absolutely, this is an imperfect process. And I, as I said previously, I will not be supportive of repeating this process ever again. The, yeah, this, what brought us here and where we are right now, this is, this sucks. Because taking either, taking either path of pushing ahead with a vote now to accept these, um, to accept the nominations, puts two councilmembers on the, to the, to the side and, 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 well, three, but two, two who wanted to be part of the, who ought to be part of the process, um, puts them to the side. But I go back to my earlier statement of when we agreed and we, even though we had that, that, that option was there for the council, and Linda, I'm sorry, the council always means the, the majority of the five of us. It's, I've never seen any time when council may is interpreted as one person can go to it. That, that's, that's not a thing. If it said council, individual councilmembers may, then that's what that would mean, but that's not what it said, it said council. If the process, if the subcommittee's process, when we got down to that last night, when we came, came together with our recommendations and, and hashed it out to come up with the four, if that process was all over the place and we, and there were, you know, nine out of the 11 people in the running, and we, we had to take multiple rounds of voting and all that stuff to get to where we were, I would probably be much more supportive of just saying, okay, let's just throw that out and, and start over again. But it wasn't. It wasn't like that at all. It was, there was a clear consensus. There were, we were, there was just, just a little bit of debate, um, on just a couple of things, but we got to these, this slate of applicants far more quickly than I believe any of us believed would happen. Because the, the process that we had in place was strong and clear. So, again, I am fully supportive of throwing this process aside and not doing it again, but I feel that it would be a, we would be doing a disservice to the, the members of the board who participated in the subcommittee, and we would be doing a disservice to the applicants to throw all this effort out and start over again.
Okay. Um, I'm just gonna ask Councilmember Salazar if he has any comments, because, um, everybody's had two, uh, aside from you and I, we've had a opportunity, I just want to make sure that you're given the same opportunity, uh, to have another discussion and then there is action being there is action being requested, um, of a, uh, yes or no to the recommendation. Councilmember.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor. And, uh, I, I think, uh, Councilmember Hamilton, uh, expressed my sentiments, e- exactly. Uh, it's a, it's definitely not a perfect process. And over the past several years, we've been working on defining a number of policies and procedures on, on how we um, should conduct our, our business. And it's, it's not simple. None of the discussions have been simple or uh, none of them have had unanimous, um, agreement. Um, and yes, this process is dramatically different from what we've done on any other committee and commission. But in our policies and procedures, it's called out separately. And this body is, it's a different sort of organization. It, it's, um, it, it has a, a higher standard, uh, that we have to meet. As the mayor pointed out, it's a 401(c). There are legal requirements that have to be met. Um, it, and with the people that we appoint to it have to, um, they have to be able to perform at that level. And that's why I think it was really important to have the members, uh, you know, current members of the board, uh, participating in it. Um, now I agree with, with Councilmember Hamilton that absolutely before this happens again, we need to go back and revisit it. But there are several components of this process that I think have to be preserved and including the board members. Um, it is one of those things that I think is critical. I think, uh, having an agreement on standard questions that are, are presented is also important. Um, that, that's how civil service, uh, interviews are conducted and, and it provides for a lot of, uh, fairness across board. Uh, it prevents, you know, any one candidate from trying to game the system and, and highlighting things that they may or may not want. Um, and, and so, you know, there are some things that we, that we need to consider. And, um, I, I, I am very sorry that, uh, not all the council agrees, uh, that, that we should move forward on this, but I am committed to, uh, the, the path that we've taken. Um, you know, the, the, we, we've gone a long way in, in doing this. Uh, every one of our meetings was a public meeting. They were all posted, um, pursuant to, to law and following the Brown Act. Um, I believe that participation in those meetings by a third, uh, council member would have been a violation of the Brown Act because that the reason we create subcommittees is because, uh, generally it can't be a majority of the council, uh, acting in a, in a subcommittee. So, um, while it may not have been fully open to all the members of the council, uh, it was a public process. Um, minutes were published, uh, for each meeting. Um, I, I believe we, uh, did everything accord, in accordance, uh, to the law and making those meetings accessible. City Hall was kept open during those times, uh, so people could have participated, um, had, had they wanted to, but in, in, in my experience, uh, members of the public rarely attend interviews. Uh, and before COVID, all of the interviews were conducted, uh, in person at the senior center usually right before a meeting. And, uh, rarely, if, I, I don't think ever I saw members of the public, uh, participate in those. Um, so again, I, I am committed to this process. We, we're very far down this path and, um, I, I still believe that we, we need to do this. And, um, but like Councilmember Hamilton, I will support revisiting of the process. Um, and, uh, I'm going to suggest that we move forward and hope that the council can get behind our recommendation.
So is there any motion or action by council on this topic?
I, I'm going to defer to, to my chairman from the subcommittee to, to make the motion. And if he's willing, I will wholeheartedly second it.
I make a motion that we appoint Paclyn, Melissa Moreno, Sylvia Perry, and Irving Torres to the San Bruno Community Foundation.
And I'll second that motion.
Motion made and seconded. Thank you for reading the names just for, uh, clarity. Uh, motion and seconding has been made. Uh, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Yeah, just, this is slate, correct? All four? We're voting on all four?
Yeah, correct. I made a motion for all.
Okay, no.
Councilor Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
I'm going to abstain.
And Mayor Rico Medina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And with that, uh, again, thanks to the ad hoc, uh, and Leslie for all the work and time. Congratulations to the four members, um, and we wish, uh, everybody well. With that, uh, can we, uh, please move on to the next item of agenda?
Item seven C, adopt a resolution to approve the two thousand twenty-one San Mateo County multi-jurisdictional local hazard mitigation plan.
This sounds like, uh, something just perfect for the fire chief maybe.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, Ari Delaney Fire Chief. Thank you for having me this evening. I'm here to give you a presentation on the local hazard mitigation plan. In your council packet, uh, you should have a copy of the staff report, a proposed resolution for your consideration, and a copy of the local hazard mitigation planning partners throughout San Mateo County. Uh, our agenda for this evening, um, is, uh, to review the background about the local hazard mitigation plan and what it is. An update on its current status. Our process moving forward with the hazard mitigation plan. And an opportunity for the council, uh, to ask any questions you have of me this evening. Next slide. So what is the local hazard mitigation plan? The local hazard mitigation plan is a planning document that allows the city and the county of San Mateo to achieve compliance under the Disaster Hazard Mitigation Act of two thousand. Originally, this plan, uh, was developed, uh, and required by FEMA for local jurisdictions and counties to comply with that plant, that mitigation act. Um, and the initial process started back in two thousand and five. And there's been three iterations of that project, and we're currently on the fourth iteration of the hazard mitigation plan. The current plan and, and its process is being, uh, administered, uh, with, uh, the planning partners throughout San Mateo counties are all the local jurisdictions as well as the county of San Mateo. And it's being, uh, um, kind of coordinated through a contractor called Tetra Tech. So what is it about? Uh, the local hazard mitigation plan for the purposes of the city of San Bruno is a, is a wide use of resources that increase our coordination throughout San Mateo County and the jurisdictions throughout the county, including, uh, cities, towns, and special districts, uh, and also the unincorporated portions of San Mateo County. This year is particularly, uh, uh, um, important because we had a total of thirty-six planning partners throughout this process, um, including all twenty municipalities, fifteen special districts, and the unincorporated area of San Mateo County. And so it's a, it's a great participation throughout San Mateo County, and it has definitely increased from last, uh, cycle of this local hazard mitigation plan. Why do we want to have a hazard mitigation plan? The city and public basically will benefit from the hazard mitigation and implementation. It provides updated information on potential natural hazards and the most appropriate types of mitigation that we can conduct for each of the identified hazards. And it makes us, most importantly, eligible for FEMA funding. Again, it's a great planning document for, for the natural hazards that we have associated with our city and throughout the county. And again, it's, uh, provides that FEMA funding opportunity. And the city, our proactive actions, along with the other jurisdictions throughout San Mateo County, will allow the, the public to benefit, making us again eligible for that FEMA funding. So how is the plan developed? Um, again, uh, as a whole county, we worked collectively, uh, using grant funding to provide the contractor, uh, development of a mitigation plan with Tetra Tech. Uh, there was a planning team, a steering committee, and all the local jurisdictional planning partners that participated in this process. The steering committee itself met once a month, and the plan itself was developed in a total of three phases. And it was chunked up because there's a large body of work that has to take place throughout that planning process. So the goals of the local hazard mitigation plan are to protect life and property, including to protecting the health and safety of the communities throughout San Mateo County. And, and this is also a nationwide program that is done through, throughout all states, uh, in the nation. It engages our whole community to better understand the hazards of the region and ways to reduce, uh, their personal vulnerability, uh, to those specific hazards. It helps us promote hazard mitigation as an integrated public policy and standard business practice throughout our community. And it integrates, uh, uh, you know, in the last few years, climate change in the strategies to increase our resiliency as a community and, uh, to the critical facilities that we have throughout our meeting and from the impacts of that climate change. It allows us to protect and preserve the environment and develop, uh, implement hazard mitigation strategies that would potentially use, uh, public funds in an efficient and cost-effective way by not only using resources in the city of San Bruno, throughout San Mateo County, and again, access to those FEMA funds that could potentially be available. Uh, another goal is to develop a hazard, what we call hazard mitigation strategies. And these are strategies that eliminate disparities, um, uh, and provide access to quality service, uh, services to all underserved uh, and under-resourced and ineffectively serviced individuals and families throughout the communities and the county. It provides improved community emergency management capabilities throughout the city and the county collectively. It is a coordinated approach. And an important, uh, component of this, uh, process, uh, over, I mean, this process is typically done on a five-year basis again, is the, uh, application of what we call equity lens. It adds some granularity to the analysis that we have, uh, to, uh, fine tune the impacts of people in underserved portions of our community. And, uh, collectively, the baseline results and the hazard results of the equity lens showed a distinct increase in impact to people, uh, when the equity lens option was added. Um, I just go back briefly. The equity lens, uh, uh, tackled, it was not a mandatory portion of this process, but it was tackled by eighteen jurisdictions throughout the county, including the city of San Bruno's efforts for the local hazard mitigation plan. We thought that was an important component of the process. And, uh, speaking about the mitigation action plans on a, on a high level, these mitigation action plans are plans that we can accomplish mainly in the next five years, as well as some projects, what we call blue sky projects, which are high-level projects that are typically kind of big, big picture, uh, projects that we would, uh, try to accomplish if we had the funding. But currently, you know, those, some of those projects that are blue sky projects, there's not current, uh, funding available for. So an example of some of the mitigation projects and strategies that we have in, in our disaster mitigation plan and, uh, generally are an increase, uh, to our public awareness for disaster preparedness. Uh, we do that here through our community preparedness committee and other efforts locally to be able to inform, uh, the public about, uh, disaster preparedness. Improving emergency planning, providing incident command training to staff of, uh, public safety, uh, and, uh, city staff that support our emergency operations center. The redundancy in our water systems and fuel supplies and generation of power to support those, uh, those facilities during the emergency. Education programs to better inform, uh, uh, the public of the risks of local hazards that exist throughout our community and throughout the county. And broadening awareness of community warning systems. Those community warning systems include, uh, SMC Alert, the San Mateo County's, uh, community warning system, IPAS, and WIA, and other community warning systems that we have available to the public. And lastly, updating the city's, uh, what we call the ELP or the Emergency Operations Plan, which is, uh, an effort we should be undertaking shortly. Um, you, you see before you on the screen, there's two different components. There's volume one is the entire local hazard mitigation plan for the county of San Mateo as a, uh, encompassing document that, that is an umbrella document that covers the whole county. And then volume two, uh, in that entire plan, it covers all the, what we call the local annexes. And those annexes are specific to each, uh, city and local district. And I have before you the local, uh, annex for the city of San Bruno. That's the coverage you see before you under volume two, and it's included in your packet. So next steps for local hazard mitigation plan. They've done an internal review. There was a steering committee. We've had a public review portion. Uh, this local hazard mitigation plan at the county level and here locally in our, uh, for the city of San Bruno has done an agency review through the Office of Emergency Services, through the state of California, and FEMA at the federal level. Those reviews have, uh, been accomplished and approved, and they are waiting for, uh, city council adoption at this stage uh, for the final approval, uh, through all the local jurisdictions in San Mateo County. Once those approvals are, are done at the local and county level, they're sent back to FEMA and the final approval comes back to us as that local hazard mitigation plan. And it's, uh, fully adopted at that point. So moving forward, the plan typically, uh, like I said, has a five-year lifespan. So it's an important planning document for this five-year period. Important, very important to note, the plan can be updated if conditions change. If we find things that haven't been covered in the, the current plan or conditions change that we need to modify, we have the opportunity to actually to modify the plan as we move forward. Uh, this is an important, uh, document that will serve, uh, to guide us, uh, for our priorities for the future, for the next five years to, to address uh, this local hazards and disaster mitigation. And again, it's required for that hazard mitigation grant opportunities. And now I, uh, just leave it to the council if you have any questions for me this evening.
Thank you, Chief, uh, for your, um, presentation and information. Uh, any questions from colleagues to our chief? Well, Chief, see, you did, you did so well, there, there are no questions. Um, thank you again. This is an action item. Uh, it's a resolution. Is there any action by council?
I'll make the motion to, uh, approve the resolution adopting this, uh, local hazard mitigation plan.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, city clerk can work that one out. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Mason?
Aye.
Councilmember Salazar?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Marty Medina?
Aye.
Mayor Rico Medina? Motion carries.
Thank you. Now we'll move on to item number eight, comments from council members. Uh, first item, uh, item A, uh, Councilmember Mason. Follow-up requests on ecology contractual agreement with the city of San Bruno. Host an annual fundraiser for the San Bruno schools. Request any written agreements, amendments, changing the terms. If none exists, request the remedy from ecology to San Bruno schools. Councilmember Mason.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I think this has already been addressed, but the, this, these requests first came in approximately spring of two thousand and twenty. So, um, it sounds like these are being addressed as part of the, um, conversation. We had the special meeting at five o'clock and then, um, the item, uh, tonight at the regular council meeting. So I look forward to seeing what that review is, and then hopefully the remedy, and then what we can do moving forward. So, um, I think that's it. And I, I don't know if I should mention other comments. Is this the time for the other, for the comments, Mayor Medina, or did you want to do your comment and then go back to the full council?
No, that would be great, uh, if you're ready.
Okay, so I just wanted, uh, to take a moment to congratulate our new members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. Um, unfortunately, we had quite a debate around the process and, um, some of our disagreements around the process. Um, but I do want to make clear that, uh, the, the conversation around the process has impacted um, the individuals that were selected tonight. And so I do want to seriously and sincerely congratulate those board members. And in particular, the only, um, candidate that I'd interviewed in the past that I just want to point out is Supriya. Um, and that you kept trying. And I think a couple of council members have mentioned in the past, so I'll mention this time that, you know, if you don't make it the first time, keep trying. We have committees, we have commissions, and we are in need of, um, you know, community members that volunteer their time. So, um, so I just wanted to congratulate her and congratulate the rest of the, the board members. Um, I also just wanted to, um, wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. This is our last meeting before Thanksgiving. And I was hoping that maybe the city manager could, um, highlight, I can't remember the date, but this is our first annual tree lighting ceremony in downtown because the rack is being built. And maybe it could be a highlight of, of the date of that tree lighting ceremony for the public, um, which which I know I'm looking forward to, and I think we're all looking forward to going into the holidays this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm sorry.
Sorry, Mayor. There were requests to mention the, the day of the tree lighting ceremony. I'm responding to that, sorry.
Sure.
So to the mayor, the, the tree lighting will be on Friday, December third. We are changing the location, of course, that will be at Centennial Plaza because of the construction of the new aquatic and rec center. And the city staff will start to push out that information in various forms as normal. It is normally held on Thursday, given that it will be downtown. And I, I, I think we are hoping that Santa can, can arrive here in San Bruno and also jingle around the block. And so we will be incurred, that, that was a very nice event last year, that was started for COVID-19. And actually, given the new location at Centennial Plaza, may actually be, be a nice event paired with the tree lighting so that the, the fire truck can go around to the various neighborhoods in the city. And so we're looking forward to that event and we will advertise.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is Rico Medina. First item is Reimagine Sam Trans. I, I put this on because we, we were scheduled or was, had hoped to have a presentation from Jessica from the Transit District. That did not occur, so I thought it was important. On November third, I went to about an hour briefing, or Zoom briefing, just to hear about how it may affect San Bruno, affect more of the north. I've spoken to the mayors of, or vice mayor of Pacifica, Brisbane, South Central, and Nobre, just to get their input as well and to see. This is a little wordy, but understand that I kind of need to read this because it's very specific. How it's listed is, is enhancements in service will include more frequent services on routes to, on El Comunal Real for us. They heard from riders from across the system, again, more countywide, that they want more weekday, evening, and weekend service. They will continue the current fifteen-minute service on the El Comunal Real on weekdays, but will double the frequency on weekends so that the bus line operates every fifteen minutes, seven days a week. The hours will remain the same. That's weekdays, four thirty AM to one thirty AM, and extended hours to two thirty AM on the weekends. Route one forty-one service will be realigned and frequency reduced to every sixty minutes. However, Route one twenty-one will cover substantially all the areas formerly covered by Route one forty-one. This will impose service frequency and hours of operation will increase to certain segments of the former one forty-one. New routes connecting from San Bruno to SFO, Redwood City, and East Palo Alto. New Route one twenty-four connecting Daly City's BART, Skyline College. And school service will not change through routes, however, the numbers may be different than what they're accustomed to today. There are obviously some service relocations, which include the route of one forty-one will be shortened to the end at Tamperand and decrease in service frequency from thirty minutes to one hour, and Route one forty is being eliminated. Route one twenty-one will cover most of this service reduction. Eliminations of Route three ninety-eight. Route three ninety-eight has a very low ridership and is duplicated by other route services with almost all users of Route three ninety-eight taking the bus or intra-county trips. We believe that there will be other options for most riders. And, and it goes on, and I may just forward some of this to council. So again, this is the Reimagine Sam Trans. So what they did is they went out and they looked to everybody through the county. So you have things that is based on ridership. And what it is, is eventually there will be an adoption by the Sam Trans to go ahead and do this. However, it does not preclude a need that may arise. It does not preclude that if something needs to be modified, it can be done. It's not to where this is only like for ten years and it's not visible. So I think it was important for us to know, I encourage my colleagues, if you want it, please go online. I am having another briefing. I've asked for another one in regards to San Bruno specifically tomorrow afternoon. It also, at the senior center, it does take the route from about three minutes to six minutes. I have asked staff at Sam Trans, and they are saying that there was one letter they received in regards to that concern, and that was from a San Mateo resident, in, in regards to the San Bruno Senior Center. So also being updated on that. So just wanted to offer that. And if you have any questions, since I would want to probably listen and digest from me, thank you, certainly can do that offline. And the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors redistricting. This is something that I did want to get on presentations and announcements. I wanted to get somebody from the county. And I, I know people are starting to follow it a little bit more. It was at the Board of Supervisors this morning. They are going to continue the listening. But honestly, what, in the end result is it's going back to the subcommittee, and it is going to be discussed and reviewed. There were two maps, the Esboza and the Unity. This was a group of folks that were appointed by the Board Supervisors. And the League of Women Voters interviewed the applicants, gave a slate, a recommendation to the board, and they approved it. And so it was by a vote of eight to seven that they recommended. And so that was somewhat close, but they're also looking to what they call, no one likes the term of it, the mini-change. And one of the maps has us, San Bruno in District D, the postal district, which for me would be rather unique. And again, I think we deal with density, we deal with flooding, we deal with airport noise, we deal with some similarities to the district that we're in with our neighbors. And I, there you go. And I think, and I think that that's important. I've already reached out to a, a board member, and I'm going to reach out to a couple others. I encourage you to, if you have any feelings, let me know because I'm certainly going to echo those that were echoed today by a member or two, and I appreciate that. But going into the coastal, nothing wrong with the coast or District Three, I just find that not maybe the best fit for San Bruno, me personally. But this is going to happen. It is a decision rendered for December the fourteenth. They have to have it done by the fifteenth of December, and this will be good for ten years. So it's very significant. I think we need to start, you know, we really need to be engaged and focus on some of these regional members who are going to have a long-term effect. So I think they had about thirty-one speakers today, so I just kind of wanted to pass that information on. And our vice mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't want to cut you short at all, but that is very, very important. People should pay a little more attention to how the, the districting is going to be there and in San Bruno. For my comments, I have a couple, and I apologize in advance because maybe they're a little long. But here we go. Congratulations, yes, indeed, to the new members of the San Bruno Community Foundation. I hope no one takes my choice to abstain the wrong way. I am sure the council will fix the appointment process in the future. So Movember, right? You know what Movember is? It's that time of year again. This organization uses mustache as the driving symbol of the movement. Movember focuses on men's health in three key areas of prostate cancer, testicular cancer, and mental health and suicide prevention. Movember aims to increase early cancer detection and effective treatments and ultimately reduces the number of preventable deaths. Besides annual checkups, the Movember Foundation encourages men to be aware of family history of cancer and to adopt a healthier lifestyle. To learn more, please go to movember.com. A quick update on a report out from Downtown Improvement Ad-Hoc Committee. Great to hear that the tree lighting is going to be December third downtown. There was an impromptu, impromptu downtown trick-or-treating. It was a lot of fun, and a lot of people were showing up there. We're talking about setting up our first community meeting. We're exploring a Facebook group to improve community communication and discussing upcoming plans for the holiday season. So there may be more than one day that Santa Claus is downtown. The Ad-Hoc Committee has also been working a little bit with this great announcement from the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors that approved the SHOCK Local San Mateo App that rewards San Mateo County community members when they SHOCK local. We're looking forward to bringing, bringing it to San Bruno as, in the first expansion of program. So looking forward to that. And yes, everyone have a wonderful Thanksgiving. Veterans Day as well. And everyone, thank you for your service, and that includes you there. So, thank you.
Mr. Hamilton, council member.
First, thank you, Vice Mayor, for giving the update from our Downtown Improvement Subcommittee. Or Ad-Hoc Committee, I apologize. My comment, I wanted to send out, first, congratulations again to the, to the new members of the Community Foundation. And, and a thank you to everyone who applied. As was noted in the, in the packet, all of the, all of the applicants who did make it through were in, are going to be contacted to and asked to participate in some of many, some of the committees that that particular body has. So, and it's, you know, like we, we said repeatedly, everybody brought a lot to, a lot to the table. And we appreciate everyone for applying. For my, my specific comment, I wanted to thank and congratulate staff on the implementation of the Prime Gov. I've been using it tonight to follow along with the agenda and be able to jump right into this to each staff report. It's wonderful. Such a massive improvement. I mean, we, we said this already when it was, when we approved it and, and during the announcement that it was live, but this is the first meeting where, you know, we can see it in action. And it's really, it's really been a huge, huge improvement. I just want to say thank you to, to everyone involved with bringing this tool, not just for us who have to conduct these meetings, but for the public. It makes it, it makes it so much easier to follow along with what's going on. And happy Thanksgiving, everyone, and happy Veterans Day.
Councilmember Salazar.
I also wanted to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. As, as we go into the holidays, it's, you know, we, we have to look forward to, you know, better times coming out of two years of, of a pandemic. Really hoping, you know, for happier days ahead, better times ahead, and, you know, looking forward to this holiday season and slow return to normalcy. I'm starting to see some signs that things are getting better, including this tree lighting that's coming up. Looking forward to that. So also wanted to acknowledge and thank councilmember Hamilton for his leadership on the Subcommittee. I, you know, I think we, we agreed that it was a difficult process, but, you know, councilmember Hamilton and I don't always agree on everything. We had good, healthy discussions, but definitely appreciate his leadership there and him stepping up to, to chair that committee and, and driving the nominations to a successful conclusion. And also want to add my congratulations to our four new foundation board members. We're expecting great things from you, so welcome and look forward to working with, with all of you. And lastly, I wanted to offer my deep gratitude to the, to the four board members that are leaving the foundation. Nancy Kraus, John McLaughlin, Emily Roberts, and Tim Ross. I wanted to thank them for their service, acknowledge their contributions, and wish them well on any future endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you all. And, and Vice Mayor, you threw me off. I thought you were going to talk about the redistricting, so I had other items still. But, but it's okay, because then I'll, we can adjourn from here. So let me just go down my list a little bit. The last Friday, I met the Azim, of course, with somebody from Josh Becker's office. We primarily talked about the litter and encampments on our freeways and the Caltrans and the, shall we say, at times, the frustration and challenge that exists. This gentleman will be coming to, taking a walk with me throughout the community coming soon. And it was also, I brought up to them that I'm considering having the north and/or other mayors as, when they rotate in to dialogue this as a collective. With Zoom, might as well use those resources. We used to do North County, so I'm wanting to reestablish that, but also try to focus on those entities and the Caltrans because I know it's not just us alone. I spoke to my colleagues. There is, there is a concern on other elements. I also wanted to acknowledge that last night, there was a mural on San Mateo Avenue that was a combination of Cappuccino talent that drew it, thanks to the Lions who facilitated it and in fruition, which honored Harry Costa, who was driving the yellow Corvette that he always drove in the fuzzy parade. In the back of the fire truck is Bob Marshall Senior, who, him and Paula who was there, and Gail was there. He always rode the fire truck during the fuzzy parade, and they looked forward to that. And also, some of the folks that are on the mural, also someone's grandmother, someone's relative. And so it was very, very poignant, and even one of the young people, one of the artists said, you know, there's eight butterflies. And those represent the eight lives that were lost in that PG&E pipeline explosion. So it was a lot of really deep sentiment, and so it was a very nice event that the Lions put together. I have to bring again about CAP because last Wednesday, they did a prep round. They've never done that before. It was the first time, and they made history. And they brought everybody together. They had the cheerleaders, they had everybody. I let it off trying to get the crowd going for the big game. And on Thursday, as I told you, the mayor and I at Rotary function made a wager, which we will make sure that gets taken care of. And that Thursday night, I spoke at the football team's final dinner before the big game. And then, I know the vice mayor was there too, Friday, JV and the varsity both won their games and made me happy because I didn't have to wear red tonight. So I was happy about that. And finally, the, the screenshot behind me is an event I attended on Sunday afternoon at noon in Foster City representing San Bruno. There was several, several other electeds that were there from the county and the county manager, and it was with Jackie Spear. And it is a representation of each flag is a person that has passed due to COVID in our county of San Mateo. And it was the, to bring focus on that and the realization and people who have lost someone to go ahead and write their name on that flag. That is going to be displayed that is over by the Leo Ryan Memorial Park. And that will be available for about a week or so, and there's also something you can get online. But it was very poignant, and so the speakers from one, a doctor from Kaiser, as well as a pastor from East Palo Alto, which is just phenomenal in both of their conversations. And the pastor has lost a sister and other very close relatives. So he spoke from not only what he's had to do as a pastor, but also for his personal loss. So those are some things that have been going on. I also need to add, congratulations to those four that are appointed. And thank you to those four that have served the board well. And also a reminder again about Veterans Day to honor and give our thanks. And back at Golden Gate National Cemetery, we're starting to see somewhat of a turn back to normalcy. And also to everyone and to their families, a happy, healthy, safe Thanksgiving to each and every one of you. It's, hopefully this year will be a better Thanksgiving than last for many reasons. Also to my colleagues, you'll have Also to my colleagues, you'll have to go into your email after you hear from our city attorney. We just received a, a link, Zoom link for the closed session. So I don't, don't, everybody, colleagues, don't think we're done yet. So we, we do have a closed session, and I'm going to ask the city attorney to, to take care of that right now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So we will be moving into closed session for existing litigation, the City of San Bruno versus Sky Park, under the applicable provision of the Brown Act, that there will not be any reportable action after the closed session. So we can move into closed session whenever the city council is ready to do so.
Thank you, city attorney. So to every, to staff, to the community, to each other, let us wish all very best health and happiness and a safe and enjoyable Thanksgiving to all. And with that, we will adjourn this meeting to the next regular city council meeting, which will be held on December the fourteenth, one at seven p.m. And colleagues, I will see you in our next Zoom. Good night, everyone.